Jared?
Your life.
How come, couldn't you say that's where I would get in on 90% of the work?
Could other than Ty Ty Reese? In your password?
Oh, I know.
Someone look at me like that.
I swear, I need to change it. Oh.
You can go to any room here in the building and log on. Doesn't mean all your apps will work if you log on.
Oh, I can do. Do you guys use Casella?
Carry a conversation.
The Casella is a little more...
So you don't have to go through all your...
Is that the only thing you guys go in there for? So you have your own program?
For accessory shows.
Not this one thread, but...
I need to call it accessory.
Yeah, we have a couple of different cabinet habits.
There's a lot of different subgroups in this building.
They do always... All of our... All of our assessors, the office manager, but then also the point...
Okay.
The state will set this. You think this is... You probably...
She takes them.
Who?
Jeremy makes it all safe.
All right.
We can start without him. Just kidding.
Yeah, I'll take care of this.
It's his decision right now.
Yeah, Julie, whatever you want. Yes. No, just kidding.
Yeah, whatever anybody wants right now. Can you make me a drink or something? Yeah. We brought Neil back. He was here for a couple of years, years ago. So he had no one. And he was struggling. He was out for years and he's kind of back up. He'll be good. And a couple of them around. What do you think? We just completed it. Sorry, is that all? Well, that is kind of a problem. They've not started trying to open. Yeah.
Great, before we could figure that out.
How are you?
Good.
Good. Woo hoo!
It's not that easy.
Is it there? Did you hear the laughter?
It's there.
Oh.
Oh.
Oh. Of course you will. Did they all command those or... I just got here myself, I don't know. I guess I did with the title. He was on the agenda.
Don't look at your chair.
Someone took my chair. Would you from my chairs rack?
You'll find it.
It's past by the table.
Someone needed it.
Oh, you know what? Look, this looks like there's too many here.
There is an extra one.
Is that okay? Want it, Lance?
What?
I don't think this is supposed to go there. We'll take that one and we'll move this down.
I'm going to have financial problems. We are taking a move on chairs. It's going to change within minutes.
It's true.
Well, you don't have to have orange to be able to do it. But you could put one down there. You could have one down there. That way people can have it.
Okay, thank you.
You're all set.
Thank you, appreciate it. Oh, boy. Did they realize we were having a session today?
Maybe not.
You made a lot of notes. In one of our policy procedure stuff. In red. I saw it first, but second in my computer. I really did not see it. I wish I had. Okay. My chair all of a sudden got shorter again.
You're going to find on the right it might go up.
I don't care. I'll be short. I look like I'm way behind the thing here. So you won't be there tomorrow morning?
No, if there's a call in number, I can join. For a bit. I've got... I got a doctor's appointment I got in order to do my travel.
Okay. Well, that's right. What the coffee goes?
It won't find. It's a mild illness.
You're lucky. It wasn't for me. Well, it hasn't been, but I should say.
Him and Cockroach is right.
Okay. Oh, that's what I was having trouble with.
If they had been somewhere and got the cockroach and he was talking to me, so he brought it here. Did you make your comments in the original work study session stuff or what?
Before. Are you talking about the employment stuff? It was before.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I mean, that's almost a year ago.
A year ago, yes.
Those are red pants. I don't want to see mine in green. Or red. I'd like to postpone both until after we get this stuff taken care of.
Well, I don't know that this has much to do with...
Well, even the one, but I mean, I'd like to find out what...
I think it wouldn't hurt to discuss for those that are here. We've only got one that's actually here, Zach's upgrade.
Well, yeah, I guess it's just...
Just be void. I think it'd be helpful to discuss that in the work session rather than in the meeting. And then we could make a decision if we want to postpone it. The meeting based on the discussion. You know what I mean?
Because my major question on the whole thing is just whether or not we've got...
You've got what?
Well, I can bring it up in discussion of it. It's to do with... If it's in the budget, fine. It's not? No.
Well, everybody pretty much understands, but that's why I'll push.
I know. Well, the other question, no, it's not just whether it's in the budget now because it means a budget expansion next year, even if it is now.
That's right.
So we need to be thinking about that.
That's why I brought up that thing last time.
Is the work session supposed to be replayed? Because it is right now.
I guess we can go ahead and start. Jared, so Matt is out today. And Jared is going to be a little bit late. And I apologize for my tardiness at a work. Sometimes that happens, so. Okay. There's three of us here, so let's go ahead and get started.
Might as well.
Welcome to the work session. Oregon County Commission meeting March 1st, 2022. We plan to discuss policy, procedures, pay grades, et cetera, within this work session, so. I think Julie, I know you've prepared information for this. Should we start with what you've prepared and then we can talk a little bit about Boyd's request? And we can talk through Zach's request too, if you'd like.
Okay.
Maybe from your perspective.
If you just want to kind of look into the packet that I... I wanted to make sure that you had copies in case you wanted to write specific notes about this stuff. But the first page is the pay grades as they stand right now. According to what was done by the Health of Rita County. The next two pages are how all of the positions are graded and their minimum to maximum pay between experience. And then what I have found with working with people is that, number one, not all positions did get put on this... This list. And so four positions are not on here. Well, I guess the planning one is kind of on there, but then the rate that he's hiring right now, I'm not sure if he still fit the way he's hiring. And then I wasn't on there for human resource work except for the assistants. So that just goes to show you that it was somewhat incomplete, but there's also a lot of problems that I have found as I've worked with people on that. So after spending quite a bit of time, I came up with some proposals for the commission to consider. And if you want to look at the hourly pay rates, and I know I kind of did everything large, but it's because I'm living in our lives. So I wanted to make it so that the grades actually start at one and go all the way to 25 without missing numbers. Because that was confusing to me, why there was any missing numbers at all. And so that, I only added a few, like three, six, four, the ones that have just 10, 11, 12. I added those just to make this list complete. Everything else is directly from the list as it's already created. So I didn't change anything on that other than just completing the list 1 through 25. So that if those positions were ever needed to be hired or they could grade them with a little bit different rating system for the added numbers, if that makes sense. And then the next two pages that have a little color on them. This is to show you, broken down by departments. So administrative type positions, assessor's office, fire department. The hourly rate that's in the light peach color is the starting rate right now as it's on that grading system. And the weekly and the annual. So if you had any questions, I wanted you to go over, see it quickly. And I want to work about the fire department tonight to show you a good example of why. I would like to work with each department to cut that, the grade system and kind of put them, how they should be, you know, job titles and how people should be graded. And so if you look at the fire department one that I created, I enlarged it so that you could see where it stands right now. The starting wage, how they're graded right now. And what, after working with the fire chief and his assistant, are recommended or a request to change some of the grades. When you sit down and you really start to help somebody with hiring for the fire department and you realize that the starting pay for an EMT is, you know, 14 bucks an hour. You start to question maybe that it wasn't done as well as it could have been. Because when we called around or Boyd called around to different fire departments, they're paying anywhere from 20 to 25 dollars. There's not, he couldn't find it, you didn't find a department that was paying as low as these start out for it. So I went through them with Boyd, with his assistant, and this is what we would like to change them to. Now, of course, if you were to approve something like this or an altered version of it, and he didn't have the budget for it, he knows that he can't do it right now. The budget always has to be there, and that's something that I really push with every department. But no EMT firefighter who risks his life should start at a 10. That's my opinion, but that's just where I got with them. And so I'd just really like you to look at that, see those starting pays, considering what's going on in the economy, what, how hard it is to live in Oregon with the expenses here. Just considering changing the fire department's grading system. And then when and if the budget fits it, he would be able to incorporate all of this. In the meantime, he would have to go lower than some of these maybe if his money doesn't provide for what he wants. But, yeah, for an example, we have a firefighter that he wanted to offer it to. A position to that's very qualified, lots of experience. But the system, the way it was, was going to start him out at like 17 bucks an hour. And yet he has all the certifications and I sat through all the interviews, so I know that he was one that should have gotten the best higher starting pay. He literally has everything that they want in a firefighter. So anyway, any questions on how he did this? Does it make sense to you guys?
So basically, that's the starting hourly.
The starting.
And we've got the proposed. And what we've got here somewhere is we've got the range. And you're saying that even if he was on the grade 15, we couldn't hire him even at the highest level?
Well...
If it was within his budget?
If it was within his budget and it matched what our policy is, which at this point, we're not sure what the policy is when it comes to that pay grade system. Because I was told when Sarah, this was not created to begin with on a competitive basis. It was only created when you're first hiring. And so like this one guy, the firefighter, he has five years of experience. And so we could have gone over to the five grade for him if his budget allowed. And, but it still started him out so low that he wasn't very high when we went to five. And so... If you want us to use this the way Sarah taught for initial hiring, then you would go by experience. But we got in trouble with the one for the treasurer's department by that because the experience there was considered, banking was brought over for her experience. And so we have to make a policy that doesn't have to be in this exact bill. Or if she worked with money and she's coming into the treasury department, does she get that experience? And in her case, she did, but even if she didn't get that, she still would have got the 10% increase above the base pay because that's what our policy says. That you can start now 10% above.
So where did that 10% come from?
It comes right from the handbook. I could pull it out for you guys if you want to know exactly where it's at. I did find it. I know it's in there and that's what...
I think my concern with that one is that we've not historically done that.
All right.
Not that it is a bad thing. I think it's just we haven't historically done it. And so we need to decide if that's what we're going to do moving forward, then it ought to be there. And if not, you know, we need to remove it one way or the other.
Yeah, because the fact that I'm now, I've been helping people understand what the policy says. So here I am broadcasting it and then finding out that other departments are upset because they didn't get the benefit of that. Because nobody in their department must have looked when they started to see that that policy actually existed. So I'm willing to help every department. I mean, I, but that's where we stand is I'm trying to help people policy based and then I run into these little issues. And like the probation period too, for six months and then a 2.5% increase. That's in the policy right there, so.
Well, the other problem with that is we haven't historically budgeted that one. I mean, historically, when we sit down and do our budget, we're looking at exactly what their pay rate is. And that's what we're budgeting for moving forward. And if we've got these caveats of, hey, it could be an extra 10% higher or 2% higher, whatever it is. If we're not accounting for that, there's not going to be money in the budget for it.
Well, and in the treasury department example, he did have the budget for the 10%, and that's why he wanted to offer it. Because here it's going off of Chris's pay. And so he did have to...
And in situations like that, we might, right? If there's somebody leaving and we're backfilling and somebody, you know, whoever was leaving was at a higher pay rate, it may not be a big deal. But there are situations where that's not the case, you know, because they're not leaving after 25 years here. They're leaving after a few. So.
Well, and then just to, you know, remembering it...
And the policy should reflect that to say, you know, always have that caveat of budgetary...
Restraints.
Restraints.
But going forward in terms of the preparation of a department budget, the head of the department working with you ought to forecast for the upcoming year, the increases in the pay scale if they've got people that are transitioning over, because we ought to be considering that as part of our budget evaluation.
Well, and then... And also considering the fact that those people that do want to work here because the starting pay is lower than they can get anywhere else. They could just go up to summit and try to get a job with them or down to Weber. And so that's the other thing to consider with the budget for next year. And for any of the people that are requesting this stuff right now is if we want good employees that really want to stay here now, we might want to at least start matching our competitors around.
Well, we'll never be, I think, in direct comparison and we have to, but I generally agree. That's the direction we may need to move in the reasonable incremental steps that we can afford to move that direction.
And plus, the other thing is, is what benefits do they get in another county? Do they have to pay an 80%, I mean, an 80, 20 on their insurance? Or do they have to pay a 90, 10 like ours is? Because that's unreal to have that. And I'm not sure the other counties get that benefit, so.
I'm not sure either. That's something I could look into, but I, that is something that I just bragged about with the county here is the benefits. Because I want people to understand that when they get a job here, their benefits are not 20,000 or more usually.
Yeah.
And so it is huge and it is something that I'm so grateful for because where I was before, I did not have these kind of benefits at all for years. So I'm so grateful. I really top them up. But at the same time, is that what I need to focus on or can we slowly get the wages up just a little bit more to match? The other thing that I created for you guys was I went through and I looked at job titles by grade and I pulled them out by grade. So if you look at like 12, here's all of the positions that we have graded as a 12. So then you could look at it and say, that doesn't make sense that the cadastro mapper and the justice court two are making the same, you know, are starting in the same, I'm not sure. And that's something I'd probably have to work with each department to figure that out. But there are some of these that are definitely, like animal control is an 11. And what's the other one? Deputy recorder land records date is an 11.
Or a 10.
I just, yeah, deputy recorder one is a 10, animal control is an 11. I just, some of the reasoning doesn't seem like it was for the best interest of some of the departments. And that's why I guess I would like the permission to continue forward, looking at each department, working with each person. And just bringing to you, you know, another option that we could be slowly bringing to effect with helping each department feel like they've got the equality or the equity of what's going on.
So my understanding when this pay grade chart was made is that the research was done as to what other similar jobs were paying elsewhere. And classifications, grades were established based on that. But what I'm hearing is, and I think one of the frustrations I'm having now is now we've got departments saying, wait a minute, they were, they were not classified correctly according to their grade. We want them in a higher grade. I feel like that's more because we want them to make more money, not because the grade should be different necessarily. And I think we need to determine if this was really determined based on what others are making in that particular job and they were classified according to the grade correctly at one point. And we did just go through a budget season, we just increased wages 5% across the board. Now to come back and be like, oh, well, now we need to just move everybody up in grade. Well, is that really the correct way to do it? Do we need to look at the pay grades, you know, the pay levels on this grade chart? Maybe they're off a little now. And, I mean, to be honest, I feel like this is changing very rapidly because of the current state of our economy and, you know, the inflation that's going on. So maybe that's the case, but... I feel like we, we've been told that this, these pay grades had been researched and determined. And now it seems like that's not the case and we're talking about, oh, we need to redo all of this. And maybe we do, I don't know. But my question is, if you go through with each department, how are you going to determine what pay grade they should be at?
Well, when you look at the base pay, that's what everybody's kind of basing it off of, depending on what their duties are. Because the county can't hire one person, like I even have two positions right this side. A lot of us have multiple positions in our departments and then there's somebody who has just one, but they're getting paid at a higher grade than the person who's now doing three things. than the person who's now doing three things. So, that's happening in quite a few departments. But it's not that all of them would need to change. I was working with the recorder's office today and we were kind of looking for her stuff. And there are a few that the grades could or should be a little higher if you look at the job and the expertise that's, needs to be there to do what they do. And so, or at least, like if you're gonna name somebody a deputy recorder and each department has a deputy recorder, then they should all be classified the same. And if you look at the recorder's office versus the clerk's office, that's not the case. And so, there's just little things like that that if we looked at it just a little, like just even with this, putting it into divisions like this. And then, with the fire department is where I really saw it lacking in my mind, in maybe I know. But having one of them be a ten or an eleven was just like, kind of blew my mind that they, you know, firefighters were gonna be fourteen or fifteen bucks an hour. So, that's why I dug in a little deeper and then they were doing the work too. So, I would like to be able to do, continue doing what I'm doing, but not if I'm causing problems. I just feel a responsibility to help each department feel like they have equitable help in all of this. And it's definitely not that this whole thing is wrong. It's not that at all. There's just a few in each department, maybe, that could be reclassified, just like we saw with the Treasury Department now, because they've changed everything and how they're doing stuff in the fire department. You're making departments that are going to slide.
I guess the reason I ask, I guess the reason I ask is because I want to understand what process you're gonna take to determine if they're not in the correct pay grade. And it can't just be the department head thinks that they have all these qualifications and so, they should be at a higher grade. It needs to be based on factors, in my opinion, outside of the county. We need to look at others and say, okay, what do they, what do they make? And again, we can't, as was said earlier, we can't just say, well, in Summit County, they make thirty dollars an hour and here, they're only making twenty-five, so that's wrong. And frankly, just because somebody wears two different hats doesn't automatically mean that they're gonna make more money. You know, it just means that they do different functions. I would dare say that everybody wears multiple hats, whether their title says it or not. So, I guess what I'm getting at is if we're gonna go through that process, we really, from my perspective, need to have a set standard as to how we're gonna review it. And in my opinion, it can't just be the department head thinks that they don't make enough. It's got to be a set criteria and we have to have a process that says, okay, if the department head says, I think this should be at a different grade, what are the steps we take before we change that grade? And I think those steps need to be, you know, we're going to document that we've contacted other entities and confirmed, you know, what those pay grades are for that, that particular job and what that individual actually does in those other areas. Things like that. Because otherwise, it's gonna become a mess. We're gonna have department heads that are gonna be banging down your door saying, Julie, come help me fix this. And they're gonna want everybody to move up five grades because they want everybody to make more. I don't disagree and I, you know, with being able to increase salaries, it would be great if everybody could make a, you know, a big fat salary. But the reality is, we can't do that. And any adjustments that we make now are going to mean a budget adjustment. Even if they have the funds right now in their budget, there's gonna be a budget adjustment next year for it. Because right now, a lot of them have some money because they didn't have somebody in place for the first two months of the year. So, there's extra money in the budget for this year. But next year, that's not gonna be the case. And we're gonna have a five, ten, twenty thousand dollar adjustment. But if we do that on five or six departments, that's a hundred thousand dollars that we've gotta come up with. And when it comes to budget time, and you haven't sat through our budget meetings yet, but you will, you'll see that that's, that's a big deal, you know? So, I have no opposition to going through this, but I would really like to see a proposal as to what the process would be when you sit down with these folks and they say, I think this is the wrong grade. Okay, then what's the process to determine what that grade should be?
And the fire department is a really good example of how we can do that because I've been working directly with them. And whenever I get an email from a department head that explains exactly what their issues are, I put that out, I put that with everything. But I also had Boyd went ahead and redid, he put two jobs together, fire marshal and deputy fire chief. And by doing that, he create, he redid the description of the job. And it's the same person, my assistant assistant, she also has an email for her entity and everything. So, I want to do that with each department, make them redo their description of the job and then re-qualify that job with what their duties are. But also, like the recorder's office, she actually did do that work and she has emails showing what other places are making. And so, she's a good example of how I can put together hers and help her and just put in the request. And if we have to wait till next fall for any of this to happen, that's what we have to do. But I'm willing to do the work and help with it. I just want to make sure I kind of have your permission to move forward.
I would like to see you also work with the Division of Workforce Services and find out what they classify as things. And I would also not just talk to the surrounding areas, but talk to other rural counties.
Fourth-class.
Better in fourth-class counties.
Okay. And I actually did that with legal because we, I got an email asking for, what do your attorneys get paid? And so, all of a sudden, I got bombarded with all of the different counties telling me what their attorneys get paid. So, I have that when you're interested in seeing it. So...
I'm sure he's not interested.
I know.
Well, I will say this, we went through that exercise, was it two years ago or three years ago? Two years ago, I think it was, on all of the elected officials and looked at their pay and they were all, we got them all within the range of fourth-class counties. Now, those ranges may have changed now. It's two years later. Some counties are making big increases, some are making small increases. So, I don't know where they're at now. But we have gone through that process. And some of our elected officials got a small bump and someone got a large bump to get them in that range. But I just think we need to be fair and accurate with the way that we go about this so that it doesn't just turn into a mess and our department heads think, hey, all we gotta do is go to Julie and say, hey, you know, I want to change the grade and we're gonna somehow make it happen.
I'm not that hopeful. No, I've actually been digging and trying to really understand before I bring it to you guys. So, I can, I could write down a little step-by-step and send that out to you guys for your approval and just...
That'd be awesome.
And just kind of look at things.
So, I'm comfortable with you moving forward in that way. With respect to this chart, if you can just do these in descending order in terms of each department, it just intuitively makes more sense to me. Have the department head at the top and then move down through each position.
Oh, yeah.
It's just easier for me to look at in terms of, and it frankly helps me in terms of the grading. And then, with respect to departments that say, well, this person's doing multiple things, therefore, to me, you look at, there's a core competency required at every one of these grades, right? And if you're at a core competency eight and that allows you to do three different job functions, because we're a small county and you have three different job functions, then you get paid a grade eight, you know? If they're all, and may, you know, you don't, we're not multiplying it because we're doing add-ons because you happen to be doing multiple things. On the other hand, if, if what you're doing in two functions is grade eight and then you're stepping up and doing something that would be a grade ten, well, then I think we need to look at that. Because it might be that you should be a grade ten that also does grade eight things.
That's the only ones that I've actually brought to you guys is that kind of situation. Because I've seen that happen now. I can't remember which job it was, but it was, there was a, it might even be my own. But there's a big discrepancy between my two positions on what those two get paid. So, how do you, what do you then do? Do you go with the top pay for, you know, this position or do you go to a middle ground? And that's why, you know, we don't have a policy on this kind of thing, so.
That's where the step A and step B or whatever would be good. You know, just to find out, okay, what are your additional responsibilities? And, I don't know.
I mean, I think we have to be looking at it. I mean, you go to any of these meetings, the different county officials and they're all saying, we're having to adjust this and adjust that just to keep people employed. I mean, I think, you know, you come, what, six, seven steps up our scale before you're at fifteen dollars an hour to start. And Ogden's livable wage now is fifteen an hour. And we don't have the same housing opportunities in our county that they have in Ogden to make that a livable wage. And I know not everybody that works here lives here, but, you know...
They'd like to.
Sure, sure. I've got kids that would love to live here, but they can't afford housing here. It's just not. Unless it's in their father's home.
There's no doubt about it. Wages are going to be a big issue for the next while, I think. And I think we do need to be responsive in terms of dealing with requests and concerns and issues. We also need to be prudent with our budget, you know, and understand how this can affect the bottom line. We had to make some, a tax increase to help with employee wages, frankly. I don't want to have to do that again next year.
Me neither. Positively.
So, yeah, so, you know, as long as we're careful about it and figure out, we do need to probably look at some policies in terms of, because the other, the other issue concern I think that we've had is, what about an employee that starts with us and then makes themselves more valuable, right?
Yeah.
I think the planning department is a good example of this. You start as a planner one, potentially with very little experience. And as you go on, you become more experienced and potentially could step into a planner two position, right? How does that look and how does that work? And I think that could be the same in all departments. Now, there's also, there's also jobs though within our departments that might be, that that job is an entry-level job and will always be an entry-level job, you know? For example, our parks maintenance folks, right? Some of those, we hire high school-aged kids. That job's always gonna be a, you know, twelve-dollar-an-hour job. I don't know what we pay them, but whatever that may be. And if they want something different, well, they probably ought to apply for a different job within the county if they want to move up. And I would say the same of some of our other office jobs here, that at a certain point, if you want to make more, you're gonna have to move into a different position that requires more of you.
I can agree with that.
And I think we need to make that clear maybe in our policy book too, that there are some things that, just because you've been here thirty years doing the same job doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna always make more and more and more and more and more. At a certain point, that job kind of tops out and you gotta maybe move into a different position.
Well, and then, like if we're gonna keep this floating around, people are thinking that every year, they're gonna get a two-point-five percent increase. That's what this tells people, you know?
That's right. It does right now.
Yeah. So, there's just a lot of things that we need to clarify and I'll just keep working towards it and for you guys' feelings and...
Well, frankly, I'm not opposed to using this scale.
Neither.
Or a scale similar to it. It may not be these right, these numbers. I'm okay with us having a scale and saying, well, you've been here X number of years and now you should be in this range. And maybe it needs to be more of a range instead of an exact number. But it could, there could come a day when, you know, finances are not good and we can't give everybody a percentage raise. I mean, there's been several years when we haven't, so I guess we need to keep that in mind, but...
Yeah. Well, and that pay grade system actually works perfect for the sheriff's department. They're using it perfectly because they have a twenty-year retirement. It doesn't work perfect for the other departments, but it could be adjusted to where we live. But if you go off of that at all, then do you create another spreadsheet and start a separate one for people or, so it's just, there's a lot of questions.
Well, you know, like I was saying earlier, some jobs, if you're a grade seven, maybe after your twentieth year, you're topped out. Maybe you're not going any higher on the pay scale until you move to a grade ten, you know, or whatever grade may be. I think we need to consider that. And that may be the case for every grade, you know? At a certain point, it's gonna top out and you've gotta move into something else if your expectation is to make more money. Besides, besides just our, you know, cost of living increases.
Yeah, adjustments in the overall scale.
Exactly.
I mean, you could decide as an individual that, I mean, I always joked, one of my retirement jobs would be maintaining a baseball field, but it would have to be a professional field with all of the right equipment because I don't want to do it by hand. But it's like, if that had been my job choice coming out of high school, you know, I feel I'm gonna mow lawns. I mean, there's a point at which I'm not gonna get paid more money to do it because they can replace me with...
Somebody else.
A kid coming out of high school twenty years later that's willing to do it and probably can do it better because he'll program it into his phone and...
It'll maybe just happen. That's right. That's right.
Okay. So, so it sounds like you're gonna continue to work on these and work on a process whereby we would move somebody from one grade to another? We can kind of talk through that?
Okay.
And then, we've got policy stuff to discuss, right? Or do you want, is there more you want to discuss on the pay grade stuff before we get into policy?
No. I just wanted to make sure that you guys had all of that. And then, there's either the recruitment process we could talk about or we could talk about meritism or the hiring policy.
Tell us where you want to start.
Well, this recruitment process is kind of what I'm doing, so I would like to know that it's okay. The thing that I've run into since I started is there's a lot of paperwork and I'm not sure what I'm supposed to really be running off of. Because there's a lot of Morgan, I mean, there's Morgan paperwork, but then there's Weber paperwork. I don't know if the Weber stuff, because it has Morgan's name on it, was actually adopted. And so, I'm trying to just put something together that I can, you know, get your approval to do. So, this recruitment process is literally step-by-step what's expected of each department when you're hiring somebody. So, they can't tell me that they didn't know if they have this paper and they know that they have to do these steps. They have part of this and I have part of this. So, that's kind of what that is. And that was actually from Weber, but I altered it to fit us. And then, after working with the fire department to do hiring, I loved how he did his organizing. And so, I found some things to, this little packet that's here is just the front cover sheet and then a questionnaire. And I'd love it if you guys read the questions and let me know if you fill any of them, especially Garrett, if you feel that any of these are not good to do. I've altered them with the help of department heads. I altered and changed some of them after showing other ones that I had previously put down. So, the scoring system basically after each question is zero to five. And then, all that score would be added up at the end of the interview. And then, on the back sheet, it's called a rating grid. We would put down all their scores and then total the score under the rating column and then put the score down here for each interviewer. And so, that way, I can document the hiring process as equitable. Everybody's getting treated the same. Everybody's getting asked the same questions. But what I would be sharing with each department head is, these other questions are, as a counter, we would like you to use. If you're gonna cross any out or add any form or specific department, we've kept those, just check with me before your interviews.
Well, we want you to be on every interviewer.
I have been since we...
Since we did.
Pointed out a problem, yeah. And then, there's also a register that, I thought that I put that in a free time, but...
What about, how do you rate somebody if they do not interview well?
Well, it's zero to five. And in the very front, it tells you what each one stands for. And I got my grade in the fire department. And so, if you're gonna give them a three, then that means that they covered some of the points, but they didn't cover everything you asked of, you know, some relevant information and some good examples given. But if they really answered well, then you give them a five. And so, and then, at the very end, when we're on this grading, the grid, I didn't know what word to use, so I put overall aura. We can change the aura word, I just couldn't come up with the right word. But I wanted them to have like a weighted number that they could weight. If somebody interviewed really well, they really love them. But maybe the scores are really close between two people, then that feeling they get from the person can also be weighted. Not only the feeling, but the way the person talks, the way they dress, the, you know, how they take care of themselves. They can just do an overall one to five down here also and kind of tip the scale one way or the other. I've just been trying to share with them that if we, when, if we do this kind of thing on a literally scoring, then you literally need to hire the person that has the highest score. the person that has the highest score. So, if it's ever grounded, we don't show that you hired somebody that had a lower score. So, we have to be careful about all of that kind of stuff. And maybe you can advise me better on that, Garrett, but I'm trying to come up with something that makes it equitable between every department. The sheriff's department and the fire department are going to add different types of questions, and maybe they would cross out some of these, you know? And, and that's fine. It's just because not everybody has to worry about what you do when you go over fire, right? So, but...
So, I guess, just looking through it, are there, a lot of it seems very subjective as far as the rating. Are there objective standards? Because I think it's okay to have both, right? And, and so, but maybe we need to make it more clear. What are the objective standards? What, what's your work experience? What's your education? What's this? Do you check all the boxes for the objective side? And then, I think the subjective points come out as your rating, you know? If you just don't like how someone's answering a question or they say, you know, what are some of your interests or hobbies? And they say, well, I really like horses and you hate them. You give them a zero, but it doesn't mean they didn't answer the question well. And so, I think it would probably be helpful to have something more objective, too, that, that weighs. And I don't know what that, that weight would be given.
Well, and with the record office, they do a lot more questions relating to work and what, how you handle things at work. But what I've noticed is the questions are very long. And by the time you've answered or you've asked the question, the person answering it can't remember anything that you wanted to say.
Right.
So, I was trying to simplify that, but we can, you know, we can pull that back in. And those, on the grid, those sections where it says, you know, what, I was trying to come up with things like how they talk about their personal life without saying personal life. And then, how they talk about their career and their work standards and job-related experiences and stuff. So, I was dividing those up, but I could see how, what you said there is, we could change those five targeted areas and make them, you know, more objective and...
And then, if you do it this way, you want to have both the same people interviewing every time?
Yes.
Because that's also a subjectivity deviation.
And that's what we're, I've been pushing with everybody is to make sure that happens. That didn't, with the treasure department, and that becomes a problem.
So, I think your objective criteria are things like educational requirements, job experience in a related field. You'd identify the fields. There may be particular certifications with certain jobs that are required. That to me, is that what you mean by objective requirements?
Yeah, right.
And then, instead of overall, or I would just say overall impression?
I think that's...
Impressions would be...
That would be a lot better. Because otherwise, you can, I mean, you've got to make sure that you don't ask personal questions. You know, if they by chance have a tattoo right across the top here that says, "In God We Trust," or something like that, you can't discriminate against that. And so, it has to be based upon their reality of what they can do and what not. So, you know, that's the thing. You have to be very careful.
If we follow our policy, but about our dress standards and the different things that are in there, that I'd like to base that question kind of off of that, that they do have to fit a certain kind of requirement to be able to work here, you know? So, somebody could bring that in there.
Yeah, I'd make sure of that, whatever it is. I mean, just because you're blonde doesn't mean you get the job. Or fake blonde, whichever it is. So, or I've got blue eyes. You're going to be, can't hire you just because of that. You've got to be objective.
So, overall, I think it's a good framework and we can tweak a few things and maybe add some of those more objective items. I think Commissioner McCall had a good list of potential objective items that we could add in there. And we may want to have a couple of, well, I guess they would just cross out and write the question that they wanted.
Yeah. They can just cross out a few of them and then just add in their...
And they'd clear those questions with you before they pass them.
That's what I would ask.
Perfect. Just to make sure they don't ask something that Commissioner...
So, in this box here, you say return the...
Register. Did you guys, did I...
Yeah, you included the register, but you call it, you call it here, job register. And then, the sheet is hiring register. So, you might want to be consistent between the two.
What sounds better?
Hiring. Hiring register.
Or interview register or...
Yeah.
I do like that you've got this in a format that's easy to understand for our department heads that can look at it and know exactly when they're out in the process and what needs to be done. So, that's great. Thank you. Okay. We've got about three minutes left before our regular meeting start time. Do you want to go over either of these other ones? Do we have enough time to get through some of that?
Well, there again, that's the extra paperwork that I don't know if you guys actually were using those or if that was recommended from Weber. Does anybody recognize it?
Unless this was in the actual overall Weber policy that they sent to us, then we have not seen this. If it comes from that, these are just segments that are pulled out from it, then yes, we were given them.
These are the segments.
But they're not approved.
No. They're the segments, but they've not been approved.
Yeah.
And you have one that you, well, one of them I gave you has your highlights, red.
The yellow highlighted?
Well, this was red. He had to, you know, put that shit comments down.
So, what I'd suggest on these, Mr. Chair, is that if we want to talk about these next to the next meeting, then we take them, read through them and mark them up and then we discuss the comments.
And then, I'll email you the sections right out of our handbook that go along with those.
Okay. I was going to ask for that. I'd like the comparison to see. Typically, we'd do a red line, but where these are really all new, I don't know where the red line is.
Yeah. Probably be somewhat frustrating.
But having the current ones would be helpful because we could compare and contrast and maybe make notes of anything we think this is missing. So, yeah, let's, let's do that then.
Okay.
Okay. So, you'll send out the items for these two. And, you know, to be honest, we're kind of taking this elephant one bite at a time. Maybe two is enough to go through in one session and we can see how that goes with the next one planned, two or three more.
And if there's anybody that fits, a problem that's in this current outline of policy, we ought to discuss it. If, I mean, if somebody's being hired or wants to be hired, we ought to probably have some kind of a discussion with Garrett or us or whatever, in case there's a real discrepancy. We don't want to find out later after it's done. And that 10% rule, I'd like to see that. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Sounds great. Thank you, Julie. Okay. It is 5:00. We're going to commence our Morgan County Commission meeting for March 1st, 2022. Thank you for attending the meeting, both here in person and if you're watching at home, welcome. We will start out with an invocation or moment of reflection and pledge of allegiance. I've asked Commissioner Fackrell to do that.
Our dear Heavenly Father, this afternoon, we're very grateful for being able to be here and to live in this community. We're grateful for the opportunity which we have to serve and the public be able to serve with us. And we pray that each one of our county residents will work toward having a united county, that we will be able to work together and to solve the problems, if there are problems, which we know there are, that we may be able to, to work through things without too much contention. We are grateful for the country that we live in, and we pray that thou will bless our leaders, that they will have, be of right mind, that they will be able to make decisions that are, that will benefit us all, not just us, but the world. And we pray especially right now for the people of Ukraine, that they will be able to, to be able to handle the situation that is over there, and that we can give their support, our support for them. We, in this last week of the legislature, ask thee to bless our state leaders, that they will be able to do things that will be of benefit for our counties, and that we will be able to enjoy those things that they do up there on the hill that we may be able to enjoy here in our county. We pray that we will be able to be, in this meeting, that we will have thy guidance in all the many things that we do. And this we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pete after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Fackrell. We will move to our consent items. First item is the approval of the February 1st, 2022, meeting minutes with the corrections that were made and discussed in last, in our last meeting.
So, I've got just a couple of more if you're okay with that.
Perfect.
So, I guess I'm on item D, public comments. Gary Stettler's comment, third one down, second line, if the airport becomes a hazard. It's just singular, comes. See that? If the airport, it says, right now, it says, if the airport become a hazard, becomes a And then, the last line, the fourth point, what it is like for those who live. I think what he meant to say is who live near the airport. The Legislative Consulting Group update, it's item two. So, the last line says there is a budget surplus, so there should be no issue with money for the interchange. I think to be true to that record, there's money for the EIS for the interchange.
What is that, EIS?
EIS, money for, for the EIS for the interchange. Item eight, the budget amendment for the fair. In the motion, made a motion to postpone the amendment, just to take the D off. Item G, the public hearing. So, sentence says the proposed amendment is to add that beneath the approach surface on both ends, we want to add that it will not be favorably considered. So, I think the proposed amendment is to add that beneath the approach surface on both ends, you can strike, we want to add that.
Okay. I'm confused there. On G, right?
Yeah, public hearing, airport code amendment. In the third line of the second paragraph starts with the word approach. Approach surfaces on both ends and then strike, we want to And then, on the action. So, the motion says to allow for, this is the second line, to allow for flexibility on the potential approval of resulting property in the airport overlay zone. I think what that should say is something like to allow greater flexibility for the for the rezoning of property in the airport overlay zone.
That's the action item right at the...
Yeah, it's in, it's in Commissioner Fackrell's motion. So, to allow for greater flexibility for the potential rezoning of property in the airport overlay zone would work.
Take that group one, a rezoning?
We don't need to make this change, but in the future, when you get to age like public hearing, so this is part, this is the planning department's presentation. And you use the word, we did a lot of work on this last year. We want to keep the impact down, which may have been exactly what he was saying. You may have just been directly quoting. But when we put it into the minutes, I think we should say that the planning department or the county did a lot of work on this this year, as opposed to, to we. And item I, and thanks for more detailed minutes, by the way. I think that's helpful.
I mean, too detailed?
No.
No, they're not. I, I mean, in the past, it's been, here was the item, the motion stated in brief, and I think it's better to have minutes that reflect the discussions. We need to designate, so this is item I, commissioner comments on, oh, yeah, just, so, third line down, we need to designate an area for them in case. That's two words, not one.
And then, if you can go back up, it says, we need to come up with an ordinance for the cattle. It's actually for the capital, for the concentrated animal feeding operation.
C A F O.
Yeah, C A F O.
Sometimes you guys just have them as a...
Well, you've got, you've got it in the second one. It says, it's called animal concentrated, or concentrated animal feeding operation, instead of just, it's an ordinance for the cattle. It's not just that.
Yeah. It can be other types of livestock.
Yeah.
So, as you come down two lines, it says an authorization for them to choose a location. Them means a CAFO. So, for a CAFO to choose a location.
Is it just C A F O?
Yes.
All capital.
It's one of those acronyms. It's just an abbreviation.
So, item D, we are working on this with the East Canyon near the resort. So, I think it's...
Part B.
What is that, the state?
East Canyon State Park.
East Canyon State.
We're working with East Canyon State Park.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on the minutes? Okay. I'll look for a motion on the February 1st, 2022 meeting minutes.
A motion that we approve. The, what was it?
February 1st.
February 1st. I'm getting drawn to blame.
2022.
I'm sorry. Why don't you make it in all second?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for February 1st, 2022.
With the approved changes.
With the approved changes.
Yes, with the approved changes.
I'm not.
At all second.
I'm just, Jared wants to... A motion in a second to approve the February 1st, 2022, meeting minutes as amended in today's meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will abstain as I was not present. Okay. Moving to the February 15th, 2022, meeting minutes.
Okay. I've got a few comments.
Perfect. Go ahead.
Part D, public comments. First bullet point, this is Ms. Kelly's comments. I would just say during commission or planning commission meetings.
Okay. First, I'm sorry, have we been looking at...
It's the third line down. It says planning meetings. Just put the word commission between planning and meetings. Again, same comment on we, the use of we in Bill Caut, so in that case, it would have been the sewer district. Sewer district asked the county to consider.
So every time I put we, just change it out for sewer district?
Yeah, in, yeah, in that, for that particular item, yes, yeah. Okay. Jim Year's comments, so this is the presentation just before the action item that is F. Third line, it says employees have many frustrations with the way we do things now. I think that's just with the way we do things now.
Yeah, with the way, with the way we are doing.
So now I'm down to the public hearing, item G, actually H. So this is the zoning map amendment. And my comment. No, never mind, that's, that's great. Okay, that's all I had on it.
I have one under number three, discussion on the no parking fire lane in Mountain Green. The last line there says Anderson and Commissioner Newton. It should be Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Newton. And it's, we'll get the information on pricing, not get it done, but find out what it was going to cost. And actually, I haven't heard back from Brett Hiner.
Yeah, yeah.
He did, wonderful.
He's gotten here today.
Okay, that's all I had on the meeting minutes. Anybody outside anything? Okay, if not, we'll look for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 15th, 2022.
So move.
With the corrections stated today?
With corrections as ordered.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Anderson and a second from Commissioner McConnell to approve the February 15th, 2022, meeting minutes with the corrections made today. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Okay, Commissioner declarations of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda.
I have none.
Okay, seeing none, we will move to the next item, which is our public comment period. We would invite any members of the public that would like to speak to the commission to please come forward to the microphone, restate your name, and we'd like you to keep your comments to three minutes. We do have two public hearings on our agenda tonight. Both are rezone zoning map amendments, and there will be public hearing time for those. Okay, seeing no public comment, we will move to our next item. Let's see, Brett Heiner is not here, that one's been postponed, so presentation from Brett has been postponed. Mr. Cohen, Weaver Morgan Health, for our monthly update.
Seems like you were here just a few weeks ago. Thank you, Joe.
Precipitous decline.
Oh, I like the, the look of this graph.
Good evening, commissioners, and thanks for the time on your agenda this evening. I'm sharing this graph with you. This is one that on my last visit about a month ago that I shared with you, looking over at the timeframe of the pandemic and some of the peaks and the highs and lows of the case numbers that we've had in Morgan County. I just wanted to follow up with this graph and give you the, the representation of the last three or four weeks and the decline in cases that we've had, just to kind of finish that off. We're in a good spot case, case wise in the health district and in Morgan County. I think I would describe the mood at the health department right now as cautiously optimistic, and I don't think we've felt that way for about two years now. The optimism is in, reflected in our case counts. Morgan County now has only eight active cases. None of those are in school age children, and, and our, the seven day average count for new cases is at point nine new cases a day. And those are, those are numbers that we haven't seen since about the last two weeks of July, first week of August in 2021. The caution, I guess, in our mood comes from recognizing that that timeframe, August of 2021, was before we had the Delta variant and before we had non-con variant. So there is, there is that potential for things to, to change, and we are, we are making sure that in our process of gearing down and changing the things that we do at the health department, that we're staying prepared to react if we need to. But very, very good numbers, very good situation in Morgan County. In our hospitals, the two hospitals in our health district are seeing the lowest number of hospitalizations that they've seen since about October of 2020. So very, very good to have the pressure relieved on the hospitals as well. Yesterday, they reported only four COVID cases in the intensive care units, 35 other COVID hospitalizations between the two hospitals, and that's down by quite a bit. We were up over almost 90, 90 hospitalizations related to COVID on January 24th, so that was a big increase. With that, just a little bit of information of what's happening at the health department right now. The Governor Cox has given the state health department and the local health departments the directive to start transitioning to what he is calling the state COVID steady state. And this is really the opportunity for us to start making that transition to, from a pandemic response to more of an endemic response, and really look at COVID and how we report to our community and the services that we offer, very similar to what we do with influenza, recognizing that it's a respiratory illness that will happen in our community, and providing our, our community the resources they need to help reduce their risk to, to that illness, such as vaccinations, and, and guidance on behaviors such as staying home when sick, if you're mask used, if you're immunocompromised and going into an environment with a lot of people and so forth. We will be making that transition over the next month. The governor's date for the state is March 31st. And as, as I've started to talk about this, I've recognized that giving a hard date communicates to people that we're going to, we may stop all services related to COVID at once, and that's not the case. What will end on March 31st is the daily reporting of case numbers. You'll see that some health departments have already started to transition to a weekly report rather than daily report. We are doing that as well. We're also going to include, rather than case numbers, we're going to look at some other data that has become more reliable. A new nuance, if you will, of COVID is the ability for people to test for illness at home, and that's something we haven't had in the past with other respiratory illnesses. Those home tests do have the tendency to give us, because they're not reported, a case count that isn't quite reflective of the disease burden in the community. But we have other indicators that we monitor as well, such as the respiratory illnesses that go to a hospital emergency room and outpatient clinics. We call that our syndromic data. We are able to monitor hospitalizations for COVID and influenza as well. And new in COVID is the ability to monitor wastewater, the, monitor for the COVID virus in wastewater. And there's been some great models developed. Utah's, the state of Utah has been part of developing those models and looking at the amount of virus genetic material that's in the wastewater and correlating that to the amount of illness that is in the community. So as we look in the future, we're going to rely more on those three indicators and report that to the community to help us understand really what the disease risk is in, in our area and what the disease burden is. And I would like to, at our health department, include with that in the, this data dashboard that we present on our website and other places, not only COVID, but influenza and other respiratory illnesses, just, just to provide that information to the community. So that's a change we're making over the next month. On March 31st, the state contract testing providers, the companies that provide testing, they will no longer be providing those tests. The governor's wishes to have testing shift to the healthcare system rather than the state provided or the local health department, the health department provided testing. So that, I think, will be the biggest change that people will see over the next month is access to testing. They'll need to look for that at pharmacies or their healthcare providers. At the health department, we haven't been providing access to testing. We made a conscious choice to use the contract, contract providers with the state, and our focus stay on vaccine administration. So we'll continue to offer vaccinations and make sure that those are available to the community, but we're also exploring what our role will be in offering access to testing as well. And that, that may be a service we pick up. We're not quite sure what it will look like. It may be as simple as just providing access to at-home test kits, where we have them at the health department and people can get them from us there, or maybe even more of a clinic setting. We're not, our health department really isn't set up as a healthcare clinic. So those are things we're exploring over the next month as we make those decisions, and how we, how we offer access to that, to the members of our community that way. So with that report, I just, just to kind of sum it up, I think, you know, it's been a long two years. We've had a lot of ups and downs in the process, some frustrations, and definitely learned some, some lessons. As a whole, I think, you know, our communities, the relationships the health department has built with partners in the communities to get through this are much better than what we have when we started. And, and so we're appreciative of that experience, and again, optimistic that we're, we're being able to move on from this. I say that because I, I kind of anticipate this may be the last time I come and, and give a COVID update to the, the county commission. But I do want to make, make the promise, if you will, to you, that I, I will continue to maintain and work on the relationship that the health department has with the commission. We'll make sure that we, we secure a spot on the agenda when we have issues that we need to bring, bring to you for, for information and for discussion. I think over the next two months, the most pressing, pressing thing for the health department will be the space that we are finishing in the basement of the Morgan City Building and when we take occupancy of that and, and begin offering services there that, that we haven't had in the Morgan Valley for a while. So we'll, I'll make sure I keep you informed on that. And, and, you know, please reach out to me if you have issues that you'd like to, to discuss about the health department. My, my role as the director is to make sure I'm serving the communities that we, we are tasked with. That means that I'm responsive to your concerns as well.
Commissioners, any comments or questions?
No, thank you very much.
Actually, I have one.
Appreciate the updates and getting, helping us get through it all.
So, Dr. Cowan, the, now that the COVID is getting over, should people still be concerned about getting a third vaccine or a fourth vaccine or that kind of a thing?
Yeah, Commissioner Fackrell has a great question, and thank you for asking that. Sometimes you get talking and forget that all the bullet points you wanted to mention. CDC guidance is changing at a federal level, and you'll see some changes that they started releasing on last Friday. Part of that is reflective of mask use and the guidance for best, best steps for risk reduction. Vax, being fully vaccinated and obtaining a booster shot when appropriate is, is still the best risk reduction tool that a person can, can use to reduce their personal risk. Mask use is, is effective and still recommended for people that are immunocompromised or may not be able to be vaccinated. But you'll start to see a transition away from mask use requirements in large scale events. We're also seeing in the guidance a transition away from a test result, positive or negative test result before attending events and also vaccinations. Some areas have required, you know, proof of vaccination before participation, and you'll start to see that phase out as well.
Okay, so somebody that's had COVID, how long afterward do they need to have a booster? Or should they even consider it?
Yeah, there's a, there's a natural immunity that a person gets when they have COVID, but the, the research on that is more difficult to demonstrate, you know, the long-term protection effect of that natural immunity, and it varies by individual. So when, when we look at that in comparison to a vaccinated individual and the timeframe for which they have an improved immunity, vaccinations are, are better than a natural curve immunity. And, and to top it off, if you had it and then get vaccinated and boosted, you, you've taken all the steps you can to, to reduce your risk as much as possible.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, one last.
Yeah, I know. You've had it twice.
One last comment I want to make, add to Commissioner McConnell, but I appreciate the time you've taken, Director, to come up and, and talk to us. And I, you know, when you lose count of the amount of times you've come over the, the previous six months, it's very much appreciated, and I appreciate everything you've keeping us up to date on. I don't think that's, in previous years, I don't think we've been involved in as much with the health department, so we appreciate you coming up.
I agree a hundred percent.
You may want to also go and mention that maybe what we ought to do is have either your representative, you know, Mandy, or the person that's on our board that might want to bring us information once in a while, not all the time, but just once in a while as to what's happening, or what they learn in your committee meetings.
Yeah, I, we're happy to participate in any way you would like us to, to make sure we're having that discussion. I asked Commissioner Anderson a few months ago if you did something similar to Weaver County. Weaver County has a monthly department head meeting that, that we all participate in. And if you had, you know, something like that, whether we meet, that's the health department and the commission, or a few members of the commission, or you get all your department heads together for a meeting, we certainly want to participate in those types of things. And we will try to make sure that we are up here informing you of, of things that impact Morgan County from, from the health department's perspective.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Okay, we will move to action items. Action item number one, Mr. Austin Turner, discussion decision on Morgan County emergency management. Approval needed for an invoice for, from a flooding event.
So I went through the normal procedures to get this bill paid because of a flooding event that happened down on 4000 North in Peterson. We started out trying to use the Kemi backhoe with Kemi equipment, and that wasn't sufficient to do what we needed to do. So we actually were able to contact the Huntsville UDOT shed, and they had a big pole thing that we used. And we, we had to get Johnny Wilkerson's trackhoe. I asked Brett Heiner to help us because at that point, we were actually, there was actually water running over the road. So we had to put about 100 sandbags on both sides of the stream to keep the water from going into people's homes. So I sent it through the, the normal standard, and I got rejected because I was over budget. So I pulled my budget for this year, and yeah, I don't, I have $2,000 in travel, $1,800 in training, $1,500 in just miscellaneous supplies, and that's it. So that would have taken all of my budget. So anyway, we have, we have a flood mitigation fund that, that everybody that pays taxes in Morgan, they pay a nominal fee of like a dollar fifty or something a year. Anyway, there's 306,000, 308,000 plus dollars, and it's, it's in the 21 fund. So I'd like the ability to take So I'd like the ability to take some of that money to pay this bill because we needed to clear out from underneath the bridge all the ice that was jammed in there so that it would quit flooding. Ultimately, we're trying to get a new bridge to replace that bridge. That bridge, there's about 18 inches clearance in the summertime and in the wintertime, it doesn't take much ice to block that off. When I showed up, one of the neighbors there came up laughing and goes, you guys are back again. This is an occurrence that happens about every other year, about every, maybe third or fourth year, it'll flood there because the ice just can't make it, the water can't make it underneath with the ice flow. So hopefully this summer will, this spring, in a month or so, we'll come back with a proposal to use some more of this money to actually fix it permanently so that the people down there don't have to worry about flooding like it's been in the past. So right now, I'm just looking for the approval to use some of that money to pay this bill.
So is the account number 10-4255-610? Where it's coming from?
Flood mitigation.
That's just what's on this agenda item, so that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, was that your, is that your budget number? Is that the flood mitigation?
That was the one, the miscellaneous supplies. That's what I used last year when you were supposed to, when you put the 120,000 in. That's what Stixxie told us to use for that and so we just use that this year as well.
I just don't know why. So it's just the flood mitigation number that we need to?
Yeah, I was trying to get that from Zach. I don't have it, but it's the, it was the 21 fund.
And the total dollar amount is the 3525, right?
Yes.
So is your understanding with this emergency fund, are you going to have to, whenever an emergency happens, are you going to have to come before the Commission to make a payment out of the fund? Is that your understanding currently?
Yes.
Which, which I think that we ought to probably use that fund to be able to pay for those items if they occur because that's what it is designed for.
And that's not my question. My question is if we're spending $3,000 here and there, the Public Works Department does on a weekly, monthly basis, that they're not coming in and reporting every time?
Right.
So that's just, that's why I was.
That's what I was thinking.
I think it's probably because it's a restricted fund, but in my mind, I think he ought to just spend it out of his budget and we should reimburse his budget out of that fund.
Leslie's concerned that you guys will change your mind halfway through the year and then open the hole.
Gotcha. Okay, well, maybe we need to have that discussion with our curriculum. Yeah, offline and just determine what the best course of action is.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure of $3,525 for payment to Jay Wilkinson in Suttons for the invoice dated February 10th, 2022, with the source of funds being the Flood Disaster Fund, 21-1100-000-000.
Could I get that transferred into the miscellaneous supplies because Zach told me I can't actually pull money out of that fund?
I'll amend my motion to transfer that amount into the miscellaneous supplies account for the Emergency Management Department?
Yes, that'd be great.
And that's that account number that you have here?
10-4255-610.
So it's from 21-1100-0002-10-4255-610.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Did you get those numbers?
No, I'll be watching.
We can give you the numbers afterwards.
Tomorrow, we can get the numbers in there right after.
We have a motion to approve the transfer of funds from Flood Disaster Fund, number 21-1100-000-000 to the Emergency Management Miscellaneous Fund, number 10-4255-610, to be used, the dollar amount of $3,525 to be used to pay an invoice for flood mitigation.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rupp, I don't see him here this evening.
Let me, let me kind of go through some of it if you want me to. It has to do with the Morgan County Car Show that they had last year, the Antique Show, and they're doing it again this year. And what they were requesting is the same thing that they did last year, was a donation of 500 if needed to handle advertising or whatever they need. And they were also wanting to be able to use the auditorium for some meetings. And I told them that since I'm going to most of the meetings, that we can just use this room. If it's available, it's on one evening, if that's okay. That's all they wanted to do.
And then do they have a date for the show?
Yes.
Have they scheduled that with the fairgrounds?
Yes. In fact, what they are doing this year is, which is kind of nice, the Truck Poles is going to be on that same date for, in the evening, actually it's Friday night and Saturday night, and the Truck Poles are sponsored by the Lions Club. And so this year, the Lions Club will be doing all the food and all that kind of stuff for them because that's their annual event where they raise money. And so they are going to be doing the food in the morning and also in the evening. The car show will be out by about 2:00 in the afternoon or by then. And so there's really not much more we have to do this year on it other than the advertising because they're actually, the Lions Club is assisting them in it this year.
What date?
Oh, it's the same week as last time, the Father's Day weekend, 18th, I think it is. And it's been approved. Yeah. So they're in conjunction with the Truck Pole. It's on the 18th, June 18th. And they might consider to do that every year from now on. That way they get more there.
So Chair, I think when we discussed this last year, we were very excited about helping and then after the event, I think we had a lot of good comments and so I think we're all on board with this event. I guess the only question I have is, is the agenda ask was for fees at both venues be waived.
Right.
But now Commissioner Fackrell is asking for that $500 and I don't know.
Yeah, and that was not in there. That was not in there. They asked me that last night, last week.
So I don't know if we can.
If we can do that or not.
Do that now or if we have to wait till next one to have the correct?
Public notice.
Public notice, yeah.
Yeah, we are talking about expenditure here.
I think the error on the side of caution and the other thing I would bring up is it does request partnering with Morgan County so that they're covered with county insurance and my recommendation is no to that.
Okay.
If they want to provide their own insurance, they can, but not piggyback off the counties. It's not a county event, it's not being managed by county officials and so.
I assume there's some coverage by virtue of it being held at a county facility.
Right. There could be, but the same for the motocross event, for example, like, and maybe, so Jim's here, he does some of that event planning and crowd permits and so forth, so.
So I think there's insurance requirements set forth on the application they fill out for the venue, right?
Right.
So it seems to me that we can waive the fee, but they should.
But not the insurance requirement.
But last year, we did it. Last year, we did it. We waived the insurance and, I mean, everything we waived last year for them to be able to do that. And so.
I don't know that we even talked about it.
Yeah, we did.
It was time, didn't we?
Yeah, it was in the meetings. We discussed it then because, because they had come in to ask us if they, we could waive the fees and have the insurance waived and all that kind of stuff.
It's one thing to waive the insurance requirement on the form, it's another to add them as an additional insured on the county's policy, although I don't know that that would cost us anything.
And I'm not sure that there even an entity to add is probably the other issue.
Or to be insured.
Yeah, or to be insured, which is probably why they've said, hey.
Maybe the insurance waiver rather than adding them as a partner.
So maybe what we need to just confirm is if there's an event held at our fairgrounds, does our insurance cover that event? If it's a non-paid event. I mean, I think the difference between like the motocross event, for example, and this is that those are paid events where somebody's coming and renting the fairgrounds facility. This is a community event where they're just asking to use the facility, much like the Fourth of July activities that we do where we're using our own facility and we partner with the Chamber of Commerce to put that on. But I think in the meantime, we could certainly waive the venue fee. We could discuss that and do that now. And then we could have them, you know, put on the agenda for next time to maybe make that donation as well.
Okay, all right.
So that sounds good.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the waiver of the venue fee for the Morgan Valley Car Show for the county fairgrounds.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to waive the Morgan County Fairgrounds rental fee for the Morgan Valley Car Show to take place on June 18th. A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
And I think bring back the other issues.
Okay.
Okay. We talked about potentially talking through these in our work session and then it took too long, so we apologize.
Yeah, during the work session, we better, I don't know where you want to go into, Julie was going to try to talk through this a little bit, so. Do you want to? Yeah.
Okay, so employee number 830 is currently at 1650, but if you look up the grade, no, she's at 1697 and if you look up the grade at 1650, but her grade is a 12, which has three years' experience, we'd like to reclassify her as a grade 14 because the grade 12 doesn't give her any qualification as a firefighter or an EMT, but only as administrative assistant. And that's not her only thing. So we moved her up to a grade 14 with three years' experience, cut her rate at 1871 and that's a $1.74 increase. She's now would be an admin specialist firefighter and EMT. That's a 10% increase on where she's at right now. Reclassifying and pay adjustment.
So I think initially, when her job description was written, I think it was when Terry Turner and Dave Rich had the two different departments. And it was initially under Terry and that's all it was, was just EMS.
There was no fire include.
Right. So as it progressed up, now that the departments are married up, she's doing both departments. So she get, with her qualifications, she could just, she could go to work for a fire department for anywhere from $20 to $25 an hour. We're asking her to be an EMT and firefighter and admin. So that's the kind of way I rewrote the job description to match what she actually is there for. So if we're asking her to do those things, I think it's extra responsibilities, thus the patient reflects such.
And she, she has gone and got additional certifications that she didn't have when she started.
Right. She started out as a basic EMT, she's got an advanced, she's got a firefighter 1, 2, hazmat, awareness, ops, and her EMT advanced.
I have a question for you. How come if she had all this qualification, and I know she had them last year, why didn't you bring it up last year in budget session?
Well, I think, again, it's, it's a wage war right now. Where before, it really wasn't. And anymore, it's, everybody's fighting to get employees and she's getting looked at. You know, she's, she could work elsewhere.
So has she gone?
We're trying to keep them.
Has she gone and mentioned anything that she wants to leave if she doesn't get a raise?
She has.
Because I noticed we did that last, last year with another employee in the county and she actually left and we couldn't give her enough. So I don't know that we can give her enough now. I mean, that's just a thought, you know, and I.
I understand where you come from. It's definitely a situation right now. Fire departments are fighting for firefighters and it, the wage just keeps going up and up and up. One department will pull a bunch of firefighters, the other department will raise the cost and they'll go that way. There's no guarantee that she'll stay.
And no different from our police, our sheriff's department. I mean, they're battling the same war where departments are offering large bonuses and other incentives to go there.
Does that fit your budget too, correct?
Yes.
Now, one thing I will note with, with this particular employee in position, most of our folks are volunteer. We have a couple that are on staff during daytime shifts, which is our most difficult to cover. Boyd is one of those, this employee is also one of those that is able to cover those daytime shifts. So I think it is important to have somebody that has certifications. We've gone through this in the past. In fact, when she was hired, she didn't have all those certifications and we asked if she get them quickly because we knew that that position had to help cover.
Yes.
So. This again, it's, it's what we've talked about before, you know, it's one of those things where we're in a tough situation. The market is such that people can go elsewhere and especially when you have specialization in, in a field that's not, really not growing, there's not a lot of new folks entering the police academy. I'd imagine there's not a lot of new folks entering fire and EMS at this point either, quite frankly, I don't know. I'm seeing our other fire chief shake his head, no, right?
I have the same issue that she, Karen. We get people part-time and then we lose them.
And she doesn't work full-time either, right?
No, she's part-time.
What's the target rate again? 18?
1871.
What grade is it?
Grade 14. So that's a 1, 2.
Three years' experience.
And this is a March 1st effective day?
Um, yes.
Okay. Do you, do you want to run through both of these? Would you guys like to?
We can do them all at a time.
Separately?
Separately, yeah.
Yeah, if you, you want me, I can make a motion if you want.
Whatever you want to do.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adjust the compensation for employment 830 to grade 14 at a rate of 1871 per hour effective March 1st, 2022. Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the rate change for employee 830 from 1697 to 1871 effective March 1st, 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Let's move to the discussion on employee number 104.
Okay, this is a situation where the existing deputy fire chief, correctly if I'm wrong, has stepped down and so the fire department would like to combine fire marshal and a deputy fire chief into one position. And of course, this person has 50 years' experience, so we really can't give him his experience, but we're asking for a grade 15, moving up to grade 17, which pulls him up to the deputy fire chief grade closer to, I think it's a 17 or it might have been 8. But the two combined, fire marshal, deputy fire chief, raise it to grade 17 with five years' experience, moving it from 2159 to 2533, a $3.74 step increase, definitely in the budget since he's no longer paying two individuals. Definitely in the budget since he's no longer paying two individuals for this position. It's combined into one.
It's part-time also. Twenty hours a week.
So why won't he work a full-time and work between yours, your department and Mountain Greens? You know what I'm talking about. I mean, Brian has talked about it with you.
Oh, doing a full-time fire marshal?
Uh huh.
That's up to you guys if you feel like that's the direction you want to go.
I mean, part-time with us and part-time with them, and that way it helps take care of the needs of the county.
That still wouldn't be full-time with us.
Well, no, but he'd be part-time with us, is what I'm saying, is, is have you discuss that, and I don't know if they can afford it. And then we'd have to work out benefits and all that kind of stuff. I'm just kind of curious.
I think if that were the case, it wouldn't be a benefited deal. It wouldn't be a full-time with either. It would be a part-time job with one entity and a part-time job with another. But the, to me, that's a, that's something, you know, we're not going to tell Mountain Green Fire that they're going to hire somebody. That's, that's for them to determine how they want to handle that.
They, they were just requesting that of me, and I wanted to bring it up so that way we could maybe look to that direction to possibly solve an issue that we have in the county of having a fire marshal over the whole county.
I think it'd be beneficial, I think, Rendell thinks the same, to have one fire marshal. It, it creates consistency for sure.
Well, I think it'd depend on funds and where they're coming from, and I think if somebody's working full-time hours, my hope would be they would want the full-time benefits with that. So I think it'd, it'd need to be a, well, I don't know that. Or maybe the next person might. But regardless, I think if we're thinking of a full-time position, I'd, I'd prefer anyways that those funds come to one, one location so that they're able to be full-time and...
Right. So I, I'm just proposing that maybe the two of you get together and see whether or not it can be done, and if it'll be a benefit, and maybe, maybe, maybe come to us with a proposal along that line. And I know he doesn't want to work full-time, but maybe the job only requires three-quarter time, or maybe 30 hours a week, or 29 hours a week, or whatever it may require. And that way we can get some of the issues that are out there that might relieve a little bit off of both of your plates to help out. And instead of approving it today, maybe we ought to be looking at that instead. I don't know, just as a option.
I see those as two very separate items. I mean, what we're talking about here is, is his current part-time and adding the, the fire, or deputy fire chief duties. As far as fire marshal, I think that's something that the two entities could work together and talk about. And if, if it goes that route, great.
Okay.
You know, they can talk about it, but otherwise, that's not our agenda item to determine what Mountain Green is going to do with their fire marshal.
I know it's not our agenda item. I just wanted to bring it up before we maybe might increase this, or maybe we might not. I don't know. You know, I'm just, I'm just bringing it up as part of a suggestion in either approving or disapproving this.
I don't, from my perspective, I don't think it has anything to do with this, to be honest, that, that particular item. I will note that previously, we had not budgeted for revenue from, from fees for fire inspection. We did pass that fee schedule, so we should see some revenue, which will help to offset this. Even though this is in your budget now, it would still help to offset that. I, I expect we'll see a decent amount of fee revenue from fire inspections from our fire marshal. So that'll certainly help. It could help that situation as well in your discussions.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that, oh, I gotta get here. Reclassification of employee 104 from grade 17, five years to grade, or sorry, from grade 15 at five years to grade 17 at five years. That would be an increase of 21, from $21.59 an hour to $25.33 an hour, or an increase of $3.74, effective March 1st. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to make the changes for employee 104 as discussed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Evans, review of application and appointment to the Morgan County Planning Commission for the Stoddard area.
The Stoddard area planning commission term is up. It's been four years. Haley has served just a little over that, and so we have to advertise per county code. We've done that advertisement, and we received one other application. Haley has also put her, decided that she would serve another term. I forwarded the application to you and just put her through appointment for that position.
We never received the application, Mr. Patterson.
I sent it in...
I've seen it. I don't know if it went to the whole commission.
It showed online.
Let's move forward along to you. Any questions for Mr. Evans?
Just waiting for it to arrive. Do you have any recommendation?
Yeah, his recommendation is to reappoint the current.
Gary Bass, the planning commission chair, recommend.
Sorry, I guess it's not your, yes, the planning commission chair is to recommend that. And I will note that typically, we have reappointed, in, in many cases at least. Part of the reason is that there's a bit of a learning curve.
Right.
Because as you know, being on here, there's a learning curve getting on the, on the planning commission as well and understanding what goes on. In fact, on that note, I think we ought to just, we don't do it enough, but publicly recognize the planning commission for the work they do. It's a, it's a thankless job. They, they don't get paid for it. They, they do a lot of work and, and meet twice a month to discuss land use, and we appreciate them, so thank you.
Make our job much easier.
Absolutely.
That's where Mike came from.
I'm grateful for Mr. Patterson's willingness to serve, but I will make a motion that we reappoint Haley Bass as the planning commission member for the Stoddard area.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to reappoint Haley Bass as the Morgan County Planning Commission representative for the Stoddard area. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
I will just put out a reminder, next Monday night, because I know you don't have enough to do, is a land use training, land use law training. We have Morgan City Act since 6:00 PM, Monday night. Most of the planning commission's going to be there. The city, of course, will be there. It's actually in our community. Some strings are repolled, and so it's just a good opportunity to go over land use law and UConn and the county for...
Who's doing the training?
Yeah, either Will Summercorn or, I can't remember the other person.
Craig Hall?
Can you?
I'm sorry?
Was it Craig Hall?
Craig Hall.
Or Robert McConnell?
Robert McConnell will be in Arizona, so apologies for not being able to attend.
Can you record it?
Wolf and...
I can ask you, do you?
Yeah.
And Craig are great presenters.
Six o'clock, sir.
Record it for me if you can.
You know how long that's expected to last? Is it an hour or two hours?
Yeah, it's a couple hours.
Yes.
I mean, it'll go, it'll go two hours.
Okay, perfect.
If Debbie's there, it'll be longer.
Perfect. Thank you. Item number five, we, has been asked to be removed from the agenda, and he'll bring that back when he's ready, so we might as well just remove it.
So we're most permanently for now.
Okay, item number six, Chief Rendell, discussion on the no parking fire lane in Mountain Green. We did get a cost for the painting and, was that painting and signage?
That's the email I sent to Brett that night. Let me check also, but. Because we went to 100% on exactly how many signs we were going to put up. I know that was of question, but...
It's like seven.
He says sign, paint, and parts.
I think it's like six or seven signs.
So the, the price that we were given by Public Works is about $2,500 for the, the paint and signage and parts to put up the sign. There won't be labor because our Public Works team would put that together. Any, any comments, Chief Rendell?
I, I put my reasoning in the letter.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I put my reasoning in the letter. When, when the county council, the old days, approved Robinson Lane, they approved it as being 28 feet wide. And so we have a minor problem there because that stretch is an S-curve that's pretty dangerous. Personally, I've almost been run into a couple of times right there because people can't see, and they're either flying up or down the hill. So that's, that's one thing. But when we had construction going on there, that's when it really came to a head, the construction of a house that was right in the center of the S-curve. We had carpenters parking on both sides, and when it, luckily, it wasn't during the wintertime, or else we would have really been in a jam. But that's when I started thinking that we needed to address this. And the International Fire Code says that any fire lane, and that's considered to be a fire apparatus access road, Robinson Lane is, because that's the only way you can get up there, aside from Valley View. But it's 28 feet wide. The IFC says between 26 feet and 32 feet wide, we're within our rights to make it one side, no parking. So that's why I, I would think that it would be reasonable for us to have one side, no parking. The other side, folks should still be able to park. And I chose the east side just because it's kind of a blinder side, if you will. So that's kind of where I, I came up with that, so.
How much is the signage, did you say?
He said signage and paint, 2,500. So 2,500 dollars.
And when I said that last comment you made, I was actually going to ask you why you chose the east side, but as I'm looking at it, it looks like there's only most, the majority of the red and the signs would be on side yards. They would not be on front, front properties, which if it was on the west side, it would be on many.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, and that's actually, yeah. So that's kind of a, a good thing. I think maybe, maybe two houses or three houses, it's in the front.
Right.
But yeah, I think that's a, that's something that, at least it makes us look like we're being reasonable about this. I mean, I'm not thrilled with parking on that S-curve anyway, but I think since the IFC specifically mentions one side, and it's less than 32 feet wide, I think we're, we're within the, the code to ask for that, so.
So I, I don't think a side yard would be a huge deal, but I guess with the two residents or three versus the six on the west side, do we know what, have, have they had any input or?
They don't have, they don't have anything yet, because I wanted to talk with you guys first about whether or not we were even going to be able to do this. I would be willing to forego the red curb on this and just go with the signage. There's no real standard in the IFC, and actually, Chief Carrigan and I have talked with, about this a little bit, of coming up with a standard in Morgan County, especially going forward with commercial properties as to using the red curbing, because it's never been used that I can see where it should have been used. And now that we're starting to, you know, broach the subject of, of commercial structures in Mountain Green, I think it would be wise for us to go to the red curbing as a part of, either of an ordinance or just as our standard that that's what we do. But for right now, that's really not in the IFC. The IFC leaves it up to the fire code official to whether or not, how it's going to be marked. And, and as I said, so it would be less obtrusive if we didn't paint, if we just put the signs up. I think I would be okay with that.
Yeah, and I guess my concern is, is if I buy, if I bought that house without a red curb, and in my head thinking, hey, I can, if visitors come over, they can park there next to that curb, and then having that changed in the future, I just, there's a concern, I guess.
Okay, so concerned in what way, Commissioner Anderson?
Oh, just that when I purchase a property, assuming that I can have parking there, and then it's changed in the future.
Then there's no parking there.
Yeah, and, and maybe the resident actually says, I, I really don't care, you can do whatever you want, and but, but there's a small possibility, I think the resident could really push back against it. But that's the minority of the stretch. I think the, the entire stretch is mostly side yard, and I, I just don't think we'd have any concerns there. I, I wouldn't anyways, but...
Yeah. But yeah, that, so I, I'm just looking for community safety and, and to make it so that my fire trucks can get up there and, in a, in a timely manner, so.
I'm lucky if my beat-up car gets up there.
Uh, yeah, it's a lot of fun sometimes, so there you go. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So it sounds like we need to maybe, I mean, what are your thoughts? Are you thinking maybe we ought to notify these residents just to? Is there any obligation to do that? I don't know. I don't know that there is, but...
I don't know. And with, with the chief basically saying we, we don't have to paint the entire stretch, maybe the alternative is to put a sign, or I just, I guess I want to make sure those residents that front that property, that they, they know what the intent is and, and make sure we, we're, we're okay with them. But again, the, I mean, that, that's just as you start the S-curve, but the rest of the S-curve is all side yards all the way up till you get around to that straightaway. So I think if we notify for the side yards, I don't think we need to do much more than that. My only concern would just be those that front what, what we're going to be doing, is all.
You may want to have something that we're, you go to the neighbors across the street and say, you might have some people parking here on this side, please don't, you know, get upset because we can't park on this side, now we got to park on your side, so.
Well...
And that's, that's, I mean, I've seen that happen, especially down in the city.
People park on my side all the time for the parties across the street.
Okay. I'm just saying, it might be somebody that might not want to, you know.
I just don't. I'm just joking.
Certainly ignore them. I mean, it sounds like we're, we're certainly within our rights to, to place signs on a county, this is a county road.
Yeah.
We're certainly within our rights, within the, the fire code and with the county's rights to place a signage there. We do signage on our roads all the time without notifying all the residents. So I don't know that that's necessarily a, a need. It may be nice to let the residents know, you know, that we intend to do that.
Yeah.
Well, and a letter of explanation would be helpful.
Yeah.
So that they understand, we're not doing this just because it sounded fun. We're doing this because there are, there is a legitimate traffic fire safety concern with respect to the geometry of the road.
And Chief Rendell, would it be too much of an ask to say, hey, here's my plan? Paint this section, here's where the signs would go?
Oh, sure. I can do that. That would be fine. And, you know, that's kind of why in the letter that I, that I sent to the commission that I quoted the specifics in the IFC, so that we can tell the residents that's why we're doing what we're doing.
Right. Okay. All right, so on that note, would you like to proceed here?
We can make a motion. One thing we're going to have to do with it, though, is are you going to write the letter to them, or are you going to talk to them all, or do we need to have it come from the county?
I'd like it to come from the county since it's a county road. I gave, I gave you all the stuff that you may need for that, whatever you would like.
Okay. I would, I would recommend that we have Julie maybe do that as our administrative assistant, or executive assistant. Your pay's going up.
Put it together as the draft.
As a draft, yeah.
And then we can review it and watch a moment changes and then get it sent out.
When we get that attachment from Chief Rendell.
Brian. Brian, about that, okay.
Do you have Chief Brendel's letter? Yeah, because we have it in the packet.
It's not in mine. I don't know why I didn't get any of the package.
It's not in the back. Oh, I thought it was. It was in last, it was in the last packet.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Because I remember reading it.
Okay. I was just thinking maybe I'm out in the dark.
So Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the no parking fire lane on Robinson Lane in Mountain Green, Utah pursuant to the Mountain Green Fire Department's recommendation with signage on one side of Robinson Lane with the cost of that signage to be paid out of the general fund and for the preparation of a letter to go to the residents from the county commission explaining the need for that no parking fire lane restriction.
Second, but as I'm seconding that, is that the last part of your motion? Motion? Can you just kind of read a little bit of that because there was a portion, I can't remember. I'm really losing it, guys, sorry. Read that again.
Well.
He didn't write it all down.
I did write it all down, but.
Okay.
But the last part, portion of the motion pertained to the letter from the county commission informing the residents of the need for the restriction.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the no parking fire lane. Payment for that would come from the general fund balance. The amount's $2,500. We will work with Chief Brendel to develop a letter that we will provide to the residents along that stretch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
So that was out of the non-departmental fund?
Yeah, general fund balance.
Yeah, the fund balance. Okay, next one, Julie, this is on the two employees from the Treasurers Department. I personally would like to have the department head here to discuss that because I have some questions and concerns about it. But if the rest of the commission wants to move forward or do something, look through that.
I would like to postpone it.
I'd like to also.
Okay, is that a motion and a second?
That's a motion. Yes, I motion to postpone.
And second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Fackel to postpone, second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right. Moving to our public hearing items. Item number one is a proposed amendment to the zone, a proposed zone map amendment of approximately 21.92 acres going from A-20 to RR-10 located approximately 4,000 north Lost Creek Road in Croydon, Utah. And Croydon is spelled with an O, not an E. Just make note of that.
Croydon.
That's kind of like that.
Morgan County Council. Where did it originate from?
Should be Morgan County Commission.
It is a European.
As you just stated, the amendment to this is a request to change 21.92 acres from A-20 to RR-10. The future land use map designates this area as ranch residential ten, so it's anticipated that these would go to 10 acre sized parcels and is really part of the current general plan. The planning commission held a hearing and we did not receive any public testimony. The planning, the planning commission recommends approval and that was unanimous. Obviously, it's off of Lost Creek Road. We have rural residential to the south along the arterial roadway and then some of the smaller parcels. Let's see, so any questions for staff? There's really not much more to say, so I can go into more detail if you'd like, but.
So have you seen any kind of site planning proposal for this? So effectively it would be two lots, I guess somewhere divided along that road to meet the 10 acre minimums. Is there any required road dedication that as they move forward to that?
We look at that, I don't know. I think it actually looks like if it goes out into the current right away, so we would require that when it came in or subdivision.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing on this item.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are now at a public hearing for item number one, proposed zone map amendment of approximately 21.92 acres. Okay, seeing no public comment for the public hearing, I'll look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting.
Sum it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We are now back in the public meeting and we'll look for a motion on item number one.
Moved to we approve the Pantry Zone Map Amendment, application number 22.004, changing the zoning district from A-20 to RR-10 based on the findings listed in the staff report dated March 1st, 2022.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the zone map amendment of approximately 21.92 acres from A-20 to RR-10 located approximately 4,000 north Lost Creek Road in Croydon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we will move to public hearing, item number two, a proposed amendment to the zone map of approximately 10.17 acres moving from A-20 to R-1-20 located approximately 3,700 west, 3,725 north, Peterson.
Similar to the last request, this area is going from A-20, well, let's think about where it is, I guess first, it's this is Whittier Estates, of course, Peterson. There's a small development up on the bench and then it drops down in and turns into, I want to say Thurston Drive and Whittier Estates. That cuts through this parcel of land. Mr. Bowman is requesting that a portion of it be rezoned to R-1-20. The future land use map is designated as village load density and agricultural, or no, excuse the R-1. So it's got a little bit of both. So this conforms to the village load density, which recommends half acre zoning, 20,000 square feet would be less than a half acre, just a little bit. So that would be in a lot of use or that would conform to the general plan. And then there's a small portion there that Mr. Bowman, I'm sure, will tell you more detail about his opinion of what happened there, but it is on our future land use map as rural residential one. So this would be a little bit of grains, but just a small portion of the 10 acres is in that zone. As the general plan is a general guidance, not an absolute. Planning staff felt that it was recommended approval to the planning commission and the planning commission voted to approve, recommend approval to you as well. There was some public comment received. Kurt Waldron, Joseph Cale, both had concerns about the development, didn't want to see more growth in the area. They live, let's see, Mr. Cale lives right above in this subdivision there. And then also at the public hearing, Joseph Pence stated that he, you know, we need to do more rezonings to smaller lots. Families cannot afford a one acre lot and it would be a lot easier for development on smaller acres. So that was the public comment that was received and as I stated, the planning commission recommended approval. Any questions?
So does that whole area, 10 acres, or is it just a portion of that?
It's the whole area that's indicated as the site on the map that's in the packet.
So that whole plot, all the way?
That yellow section.
Oh, just the yellow section.
The yellow highlighted section or yellow surrounded section. It's kind of hard to see because you've got.
You can see there, I'm leaving on this for a second. You can see this grayish area, that's the R-1. So it's a smaller portion of this request that is recommended for one acre zoning. And as I said, the applicant will discuss more about.
Looks like maybe a quarter or so of that 10 acres is in the R-1 designation, future land use designation. There, you can see the site there.
You can see much better. It's currently zoned A-20. It would be similar zoning to Whittier Estates thanks to Whittier Estates lots are larger their own, if over acre there, but.
But was it zoned R-1-20 also? Was it zoned R-1-20 also?
The front part, the rear part is R-1.
To the gas pipeline. Was R-1-20 zoned?
Okay, any more questions for staff before we get questions from the applicant? Okay, Mr. Bowman?
I really wasn't going to say anything, but now I feel like I'm on. If you go back to the early 2000s, this subdivision, Meadowbrook Estates, was approved by the governing body and already existed. Subsequent to that, about 2005, the Peterson Area Plan was created and charged with doing an area plan. Well, since, and it was a village under the general plan and the standard for a village back then, I haven't looked at it since back then, but the standard back then was actually a 10 minute walk was the actual standard or approximately 3,000 feet. A 10 minute walk would take, by me, would take me over here. The 3,000 feet came in here, the council made this part essentially when they approved this subdivision, the south end of the village, as it would turn out. So when we sat down to do the Peterson Area Plan, all of which Whittier Estates would be within the village center. And we recognized since this was already half acre and part of the village and we would need a road that connect this through and create the interconnecting roads that would constitute the Peterson Village, that the land down here on this parcel adjacent to the interconnecting road would be half acre from the east boundary of Meadowbrook subdivision to the east boundary of the pipeline corridor. That's what we did in the area plan. That's what the planning commission approved. When somebody came in and put colors on it, they got this half acre, this half acre and messed up and made that one acre. Now, obviously, it doesn't make sense to have half acre further away than the one acre from the village center. It's just a color error on a piece of paper. Thank you.
So before you leave, the rest of that area there, that's yours also to the right?
Yeah, this parcel goes through here, it's about 35 acres, then this, this way is ours.
Okay. And the road is way back up to the right?
This way, yes. It goes.
Okay.
And the river runs through it. It crosses the river, but not very far.
I just don't want to see a whole lot more density down there, but I could see where it's out of place without.
So really what this rezon has, is it's just infill of the southern boundary of the Peterson Village.
Right.
If you don't have any other questions, I'll sit down.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. We appreciate it. Okay, any other questions for staff before we move to public hearing?
So basically, the only comments that came in, Lance, from these people that commented on it is basically that it's the same thing as everybody else. I want to keep my site. Basically, I want to have an open space and so, you know, and I understand that, but these people have rights also.
That was the comment, the request to pick it up. We can enjoy that.
Is there any open space that's supposed to be in this area, even though it's a town center?
We do not have it designated as such in the general plan. We have agricultural, open space would only come in to master planning committee or PRD and that.
Okay.
I can speak to that a little bit from a pragmatic point of view, if you want to know what the pragmatic is.
I do.
What we're talking about. It's like I said, the river runs through it and I actually water my fields. Let's just say the river runs like here. The irrigation, which actually runs along the river, I watered this way curiously, which is to say that the land dips to the west, but then it steps back up in here. So when the river floods, all of this going this way floods. It'll never have houses. For pragmatic reasons, it will always be open space.
Well, that's what I worry about is that, is I mean, if that's going to be that way and you're flood irrigating there, the water goes there, we're going to have another problem with flooding of homes. And then we have conflict.
Not where that is.
There's a batch there where he's.
Where these barns are, the last flood we had was one of our higher floods. The water came across here. It didn't flood the barns, it didn't flood this, it didn't flood this. And I spoke to that when they were doing this rezon. Yeah, there was ponding over here, but that's an agate because there was a low spot. Every time we watered the fields, it pounded. But the river does not flood any of this here or this over here where it played in that subdivision. Because the fields step up right about where you see this line here, it elevates again about up 33 feet or so. And so the water comes this way and then goes that way. It does not go over to where the houses are.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing on this item.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are now in public hearing for item number two. Seeing no public comment for this item, look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene a public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We're now back in the public meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the Bowman rezon map amendment, application number 22.008, changing the zoning district from A-20 to R-1-20 based on the findings listed in the staff report dated March 1st, 2022.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item number two, proposed amendment to the zone map of approximately 10.17 acres. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, we will move to commissioner comments. Commissioner Fackel, any comments? I'll take that as a no, commissioner.
No public comments, but after, or no commissioner comments from me, but after, I would like to request a closed session to, session to discuss the disposition of real property.
Okay, perfect.
And one other item, I want to update on some litigation.
Okay. Perfect. Any comments, Commissioner Anderson?
I have very exciting, hopefully, comments next meeting, but we'll know by, I think a little bit by tomorrow and more by Friday. Make sure I'll get an email to you guys, but we also want to bring it into a public meeting of our lobbyists that are working for money for the Mountain Interchange.
Wonderful, wonderful. Hoping for good news there.
Yes.
May I make a comment now that I'm thinking?
The time has passed, no, go ahead.
I just want to mention to everybody, the day on the hill last week was very, very informative and if you ever get a chance to go up there and just go into the, on the floor with our legislator to see what happens and how it happens and, I mean, it's a very interesting process. Not that I ever want to be there, that's for sure, but it was a very interesting process and meeting with the legislators, legislators up there was a very good thing. And so, you know, I recommend you try it once, okay? And I understand the CFO is now proceeding and the Public Planning Commission, I mean, not public, but the Planning Commission. And so that they were telling us what we needed to do and I passed it on to them last week. So in the meeting. I think that, and as far as the internet, I think I've told everybody what's going on with that. We'll just continue with that, okay?
Perfect, thank you. We have a motion to adjourn our meeting and convene a closed session.
For the purposes of discussing the disposition of real property and an update on pending litigation, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? A motion and a second. All those in favor?
We have to do it by vote.
I did.
Oh, sorry, we gotta do a roll call. Thank you. So, Commissioner McConnell made the motion. Commissioner Anderson was the second. Commissioner Fackel?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
I vote aye. Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will adjourn our public meeting and convene a closed session.
Good night, ladies.
That's already flipped.
You know, it's an early night for you.
You can go home and watch the State of the Union.